Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. And welcome, this is our second meeting of the month, which is informational in nature. But our first item on the agenda, public comment. No one that's indicated if they'd like to speak? Okay. Next item on the agenda are the reports, and our first one is from the audit committee.
So, we met Monday afternoon, 4 o'clock with the auditor for our preliminary. We have a outside board, outside of the board member now as well as Stevie, I'm forgetting her last name, I'm sorry.
Rockwell.
Rockwell, Stevie Rockwell, and she was present as well for the presentation of the financials. We will have the board presentation with the auditor, I think, the last week, the last board meeting of October, is that correct?
October 12th.
October 12th, first board meeting of October. And so, they will go through the complete audit with us again. As a summary to the board, I think it was a good audit. We had the highest ratings they could give us for everything except the last financials that they do. And that one was still a good rating, but there were some items that we need to clean up a little bit. And they, they told us honestly, they never give the highest rating on that one because there's things outside of their control. That's the one that includes the clubs. And basically, there's no way for them to make sure that every dollar donated winds up getting handed in. So, they can never give a clean rating, the highest rating to that. But there are some things within our control that we will need to take some action on in that as well. The good news was, compared to last year, we made progress in everything. There are still a couple more things that we had issues with last year, and we minimized those issues, but we still have a little bit more work to do, in this way I would categorize. So, it was a good audit. There is one other thing that they talked to us about, which is going to be important to our taxpayers because it will make the numbers look really weird next year. New York State has decided to include the full pension liability for our financials, which will mean that instead of showing a $7 million number or something like that, now I think it was 7.125 million this year, it is going to go to $26 million. And that is going to be an obligation that is happening in every district. The state is requiring that change in reporting, which if you look at our financials, it will make every district's financials look horrible next year. It has nothing to do with what we did, it will have nothing to do with our spending. And from what we were told, the state will also give no explanation, which means when the calls come in, it will be up to us to decide how we handle said calls because it will look like all of a sudden our budget turned upside down. Because there's a big difference between $7 million and $28 million in terms of an expense, the liability against us. So, that's the way it's going to be next year. That was not a good part, but it had nothing to do with our doing. So, okay?
Okay, good, the next item is the vision coalition. I'm apologizing, getting notes out to you yet, but we have, we had a vision meeting Tuesday night, and I have for you the most recent up-to-date vision, mission, values. And it's up out there too, so here's a few copies. And at the meeting was Ms. Ward, and this one was Scott and I. And help me fill me in if I miss something, but the first thing I forgot we did at the meeting was go through the vision, mission, and values. In the vision part, we did not change any of the wording. So, that's the same as what you saw the last meeting we had on 12th. The mission, we took out a phrase, and I, you don't see it there now, it's out of there, but there was a sentence that said, "By removing barriers, we provide equal opportunities." We took that out and just started with, "We provide equal opportunities for all students." So, that's the only change in the mission statement. And then we spent some time on values, and this part isn't finished yet, only because we didn't add a description for each value that we put in there. But right now, we have eight that we felt were important to us as a group. And there are some, I'm not going to call them descriptors or add-ons or something to give it a little more explanation. So, that, that has changed, and that's updated. But again, it's still a snapshot, it's not finished yet. But still, we stopped there, and then we spent the rest of the meeting talking about the event. And I'd like you to help me in if I forget something or explain it in a strange way. But we thought we have, we've been talking about this event for October. And we knew that that week of October 23rd was good because of sports were being completed by them and so on. And there didn't seem to be any big things happening that week. We looked at October 26th because it's a second meeting of the board and thought about having it that night. So, think about that, and we thought about where we could have it, and we decided on East Hill just because we thought it would be easier if people were walking up, you know, and seemed like a great place to have it. And it's a pasta dinner with, okay, so it would be, have you ever heard of like a productive dinner? Where you go with an appetizer at one person's house, and then the main meal, and then the dessert? So, this was what we would do, if you like this idea. One room, four rooms at the, at East Hill. Cafeteria, the grade room, the library, and the other room was...
It did to be determined.
Yeah, we didn't come up.
Yeah, to be determined, that's why I have X, room X to be A. So, we would have appetizers in each room. So, when people got there, they would go to one of each of three rooms. And one would, one room we would have committee members talking with people about vision. And another would be mission and another value. And people would go from one to another, providing feedback on the statements so far as they are in discussion in different ways, by talking one-on-one with us or maybe having posters and putting sticky notes, or just surveys as they walk out. Whatever manner we could get the most feedback out. So, after someone spent 15 minutes or so, we thought, in one room, having a salad or care sticks or whatever, they would go into the next room and so on. And then we would finish in the, all together, have a meal together in the cafeteria and kind of have a wrap-up, closure, with, you know, just kind of explaining the whole process and give a general evaluation at the end. Forgot about the kids. At the same time, the kids would be able to do things in the gym. And we talked about the cost of renting a bouncy house and having high school students help with, and clubs help with, games and art activity than the bouncy house and so on. But we would think about hiring staff to do the supervision of the children, so we didn't have that fall on other students. But they could, of course, if the club wanted to do beanbag toss, or we were talking about coloring activities, or just something to help keep the kids entertained. And then parents could either have their kids join them for the dinner, or the kids could stay. It's kind of up to the parents.
For the kids, we figured we would have pizzas in the gym, so as soon as they arrive, there's something for them to eat.
Yes.
And that way, they're being fed even though their, the parents are kind of going through the rest of the rooms.
So, what questions do you have so far?
Is there enough time to plan all this?
We think so.
Yeah.
We were planning that the next meeting is Monday, the 16th. So, we'll have another meeting before that to iron out all the details.
Good, and the specific goals to unveil, kind of the mission, the values, and to get the community's feedback?
To get feedback.
Feedback, okay.
Do you like having it on the 26th, on the Thursday, at the same, in place of the second meeting?
Works for me. What time we plan it starting is probably around 6:00?
About 6:00, and then wrapping it up maybe in an hour and a half if we...
Yeah, it'll probably be between an hour and a half and an hour and 45, we figured out, with the timing set we set up.
15 minutes per room, five minutes travel between each.
Sounds like a good idea.
We costed it on an, just a back-of-the-envelope estimate to see, okay, how much are we thinking here? We figure we can do the whole thing for less than $3,000. That's with all the finger foods being paid for, with cookies for dessert and a pasta kind of thing for the dinner. And that was assuming that we had more people than actually can fit in the cafeteria. So, we think, we think it's not going to cost us that much money. And we conceivably have an incredible feedback opportunity for the community.
Our goal is 500? We would love more.
If, if we get 500, we have a problem with capacity.
We thought about that, we could handle, because we found out it's too easy for them. So, if we had more than that, we could handle overflow potentially in the other room.
We have to do two servings at a time.
Two servings at a time as part of rotation.
And that's if all the kids came in.
Yes.
If we had 500 show up, we'd have to figure out something, right?
And we want people RSVP.
Probably ask, RSVP, and then who's, who's working at all the stations, or, you know? You want us to, or you want these kids?
Yeah, yes. Why don't you ask committee members and board members to be in the room and, you know, facilitate the discussion and answer questions and just get as much feedback.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
I mean, we had the feedback in the beginning with the survey, and I think this is, we can present the work that's been happening and just see what... Yes, we were talking about RSVP with cards, online, a phone call. So, different, different methods of communication for, you know, to RSVP and to get feedback.
Sure. Did you talk about advertising besides just, you know, in school or any ads or any...
We did.
We did, we talked about RoboCop.
We talked about a flyer at the, whatever it is, eight locations, we need to to hit the whole public of the country area. We talked about the newsletter that goes out, but we didn't know the dates, that was something we needed to confirm.
That might be, that timing might be good.
And then the, Robocop, Robocall, sorry. Sorry, brain, brain slipped there. Robocall, and then the last one was...
The website.
The website and social media, right.
So, we thought we could really inhale.
So, in terms of pulling it off, we really thought, we have a bunch of different components that staff of the district really will help us make that pieces, those pieces happen. So, from a board and committee perspective, it's really making sure our presentation and facilitation is ready, which we think we did do in the month, so.
If we wanted to look at the values again, you know, iron those out at the next meeting, just plan out who's going to be where during that meeting.
Sure. We really would like to do it as in place of the board meeting, so that all of the board will be there. We think that's going to be a lot of work, too. We also think that we have the board meeting already on a calendar schedule, so kind of fit really nicely, you know? And we said it had to be a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, so all of those came together.
Yeah. Makes sense to me. What do you think?
We don't vote on it or anything, but we just move ahead with the plans and...
I would say yes.
The next meeting is on the 16th, Monday, it's a Monday night, at 6 o'clock here at the college. And this, this is on our board document, but I'll make sure everybody's on it. Next report is student representative report.
Great, so, we can start this off on like some really fun notes. Spirit Week began this week. I, I was a part of student council, so I helped pick out like the days for Spirit Week and stuff. Monday was roll-out-of-bed day, AKA pajama day. Everyone looked pretty awesome that day. I got to wear a onesie, I was happy.
Pretty hot for a onesie.
It, it was, it was so fun. That day was also the college, college caravan day, so they thought we probably looked pretty ridiculous. And I don't know if they want to accept us after that, but you know what? All right, and Tuesday was fashion disaster day. That day was really funny, everyone just looked ridiculous. Yeah, that's about all I can say about that, everyone just looked ridiculous. Wednesday was class day, the junior class one, and I believe theirs was blue and sunglasses they had to wear. Sad loss for the senior class, but it's okay, we'll survive without the $100. And today was Throwback Thursday. Everybody dressed from like a different era, and it was pretty fun, a lot of people participated. I would have liked to see more people participate, but that's always, you know, something you can't really account for. And then tomorrow, obviously, Black and Gold Day, Homecoming Night. And for this week, I took over the school Instagram again, that was really fun. I got some great pictures for yearbook as well as the Instagram. Yep, so that's enough on that. Next is the student council car wash. Last Saturday, the student council held a car wash and bake sale to help raise funds for students at the Harmony School, which was a school in Texas affected by Hurricane Harvey. I didn't have the number by the time I wrote this report and sent it in, but we made $450, so that's really great. All that money is going to be sent to, you know, help the school, and they really need it. We're going to do another fundraiser for the same cause, and that's going to be on October 17th from 5:00 to 7:00, which is going to be a McDonald's night up at Pound Time Bridge McDonald's. So, we hope we can get as many people as possible to come to that. I'm going to be advertising it on the Instagram, we're going to make some posters to go around the school. All right, and my next point was something I forgot to mention last week, which is, this year's Fill the Bus Food Drive, which this year, our hashtag is #FillToFeed. Last year, we had huge success with the Fill the Bus Food Drive, it helped so many people. And this year, we wanted to go over the top. This year, instead of just filling the one bus, we are trying to fill two buses. And this year, instead of Jimmy Found, who sadly we could not get to come to the school because he's a pretty busy guy. This year, we're trying to gain the attention of former Yankees player Derek Jeter. Even if that doesn't work, doesn't matter, if we can raise, you know, get food for this cause, that's all that matters. And obviously, we're using that hashtag to fill to feed to spread the word across social media. And hopefully, it goes just as well as last year, obviously, we wanted to go better. All right, and then finally, issues. My first issue on the agenda is the computers in the high school computer lab, they're, they're not very good. My graphic design class, and I'm trying not to make things biased because I talk a lot about classes I'm in, and I'm trying to include more classes that I'm not in, but I have to get people to communicate with me first. I've put some posters around the school, no one's contacted me yet, so I just have what I have in my head. So, the computers in the high school computer lab, they're not very good. When trying to use advanced programs like Adobe InDesign and Adobe Photoshop, it's really difficult to use these programs. It's even just the computers themselves, we had one student who it took up until the last five minutes of class for their computer to start up, so they couldn't get anything done at all. So, if that's something that can be fixed, just at some point, that would be great.
Danielle, can we put point of clarification? It's Lab 218, it's an extra lab, right? So, it's not the one in the library, so don't get me confused. Just, and we are aware of it, yes, and we are working to make that change. All right? You are spot on.
All right, that's good to hear. And then my other thing is something that I did bring up last week, but I just noticed that it's going to be an issue and it's got to be worked on for next year, just so students can be in, be involved in as much stuff as possible. Because personally, I feel like, you know, being involved in the school community is a really great thing, being in all these clubs. But it's very difficult with the way Block 5 is this year. The schedules of clubs are really, really clashing. For example, I'm both in CSI and student council, both of those clubs happen on the same day. And I, obviously, I'm really, I've been in CSI for all four years of high school. I'm a video editor for CSI, and I'm president this year of CSI, so I really need to be there. But also, I'm a brand-new member to student council, and it's my senior year, so I'd also like to be just as dedicated to that. But it's really impossible when everything's scheduled right at the same time. So, I realize this is also an issue for like other students, and I'd like, I realize this probably can't be changed for this year because of, you know, schedules already being made and everything. But I think it would be a good thing to start thinking about for next year. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Danielle. Next on the agenda, we have discussion items. And we have the board's sheet. There's a few things on there, there's addition of new business category, the planning calendar, and then SWP, I think you call it, SWOT analysis possibilities. And Dr. Brody wanted to know whether or not we were interested in going ahead on those items to pursue contacting the presenter to help with all that.
Well, I would first say that the, I thought the board's sheet was very good. And I took Mark home that night, so we had a little bit of, he was very happy with how that turned out, too. He was going to talk with them as a follow-up, I don't know if that happened or not. Because I guess there was a little bit of angst in communication before they showed up, but what they brought to us was exactly what we asked for, and he did a really good job, I love. So, I would encourage us to, I mean, it's not cheap, so I would encourage us to really target what we want their help with. And that's prob, that probably warrants a little bit of discussion around what are our other alternatives that we might want an outsider to help us with, because we really haven't had that discussion. So, that might be worth us as a board talking about. But I would definitely encourage us to involve them again to help us continue to move forward the way we want to.
Yeah, I would agree.
Were you looking for something specific?
Actually, I didn't know if there was an additional cost with each one, so I think it's worth finding that out as well.
Sure.
For each of those, I think.
We, we didn't really discuss the new business category, is that something we were, or is that something we...
Yes, that's why you wanted to discuss it. There was a, there was just a development, does the board want to add a new or other business category to the agenda?
Yeah, we had...
And some parameters around that.
At the, at the end of the retreat, we had the discussion we had around the new business agenda and the discussion around creating a calendar that helps us keep track of outstanding actions and placing them, and that being part of our regular meetings, so that people know we're planning them out, right?
Yes.
And then there was a third one that's not coming to my mind right now.
The third one was the SWOT analysis that Dr. Brody asked me just to provide you with some information, which I did. But those were the three. Oh, yeah, those were the, on my notes, those were the three, sorry. My understanding is that, that Mr. McPherson from NISBA did have some additional information that he was going to have a follow-up conversation with Dr. Brody about, I don't know if that happened, but they, NISBA does have some structures or some ideas on how to do or how boards might consider either other new business category or a planning calendar. So, I certainly could, would be happy to follow up, find out more information about it, if there's an added cost.
I'm sure if they come facilitate something, there's going to be an added cost.
Right. But what is it?
But we are... Yes, we need to know what that is. But in terms of a resource, because we're a member, there's a lot of information and tools they can give us that's for free, as long as we target what we're asking for, you know, they can help us with that.
And how we can access that. Those were, at least those three topics were the ones that Dr. Brody was going to talk with Mr. McPherson.
Next on the agenda are the presentation. I guess that you can find out if there had been a conversation yet, and if not. Okay. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the presentation, and the first one is curriculum development process.
So, this is a fairly just simple informational piece for everyone. This question came up just about how does curriculum work in the district? And it's really very simple. Can you get that to me? It's right there, no. There are two basic ways that, that curriculum works within the school district. The standard for everything are our learning standards. So, whether it's the New York State Learning Standards or National Learning Standards, all of our courses, all of our curriculum are based on some kind of standards. And it's very simple, there are two paths. One path is the path that state ed requires. We know that there are requirements at elementary, middle, and secondary level. Those requirements are put forth by the state, and then school districts have to meet those requirements. Some of it is pretty specifically standard-based, the LA math, social studies, science, health, physical education, recreation, and I will forget all the rest of them, foreign language, but there's business, there's a lot of them. And when that happens, when those standards come out, which I'm going to talk a little bit about the next-gen standards that are, that were coming out or that are out now in just a little bit, then school districts have the responsibility to take those standards. And what we've been doing is working on, what do those standards mean? And then how do we apply curricular materials and instruction to those standards? So, we gave you two examples of some things that we've done. So, with some of the standards that we've been working on, that we've been looking at in grade six through 12 last year, all the departments met. They looked at region's assessments, where they were attached to a course, looked at our student performance, looked at and identified where our students were doing very well, where are standards that we might need to support. And in grade six through 12, then there was an identification of a skill set and a standard that the entire department would work on, knowing that students go from sixth grade through 12th grade. So, that process happened last year, that process is going to continue this year, and they're going to get started, Mr. DiPaolo and Ms. Gleason, on October 6th with the departments at the secondary level. So, that's one way that that happened, and that's very teacher-driven. So, the structure was put together with Mrs. Virtulo last year and Ms. Gleason. And, but the, the work is done by teacher teams. So, that's really the bottom line, you're going to hear me say that a lot, because most of our work is done by teacher teams. The second example of that is the literacy program. The second example of that is the literacy program happening at East Hill. So again, there are ELA standards. When Common Core came in, we were, folks were looking at what do the standards mean at my grade level? How do we meet those instructional materials? What do we do? At East Hill last spring, they came together as a committee and said, "We really think that we need to look at what we're doing for literacy instruction that is cohesive and connected in grades K through five." Again, a teacher team did that work um with Ms. Lawrence leadership. And now this year, they're implementing a literacy program. So that's how it gets started. So sometimes state ed says, "You must do," and then we take it from there. Um, one piece that I think is important, that as we're doing this work, we are getting better at, is the evaluation of, so we're, we're teaching curriculum, we're using instructional materials, how is it going and how do we know? So that's something that we're getting better at and making sure that the learning that needs to happen is happening. The second strand, and this happens much more at the secondary level, is really that the teacher-driven or the interest-driven courses that happen. So teacher, a teacher or a teacher and some students say, "Hey, we would really like a course in video game design." The teacher and/or teachers sometimes work to develop that curriculum. We approve the curriculum. Part of it is, can we make sure we resource it appropriately? We get it going and off they go to the races and the teachers develop it and the teachers drive it. So a couple of um courses as an example, one is the video game design I just mentioned. The little tiny picture up there actually is from the first year of global problem solving. Which was this friends' class, when we did, they did the exit twenty-nine project. Again, that was a teacher and student-driven course. Communications media, there's others that we've had. So that's very, that's very staff-driven, teacher-driven, teacher and student-driven. So those are the two paths that curriculum gets developed and gets um organized and implemented. Can you go to the next one? Within the district. I know it sounds like, wow, it should be maybe, is it that simple? It really is. If people have an interest and they wanna develop a course, they develop a course, we approve it and off we go. And now that I'm sitting here thinking about the locally developed list, I could add some more. So, but here's some examples, I thought that might be helpful. One, CPR. On some random Wednesday a couple of years ago, it's what it feels like does. State ed said, "You must now teach CPR to every student grades nine through twelve, once throughout their high school career." So go forth and do it. And then schools figured out, because it's now a requirement, how to make that happen and we did. So that's one way, that's an example of when the state says, "This is what you're going to do." We also have a shift in social studies a few years ago. Not in the content, but in how social studies inquiry works and how social studies is taught. That was a shift. That was a shift in an expectation that the state sent to school districts, "You must do." And in a little bit, we'll talk about the next gen standards. Science has been out, was approved a little while ago. Social studies inquiry was out last year. And now, as of September eleventh, we will be entering into the phase of the next generation standards for ELA and math in New York State. I have some other information about that in a little while. So those are some things that state ed says you must do. When that happens, it's our job to figure out how to make it happen for students. On the other side, though, are the locally developed curriculum and courses. So we already mentioned um global problem solving. There was a gaming class at the middle school last year. There was a game, video design class up here. We've had forensics, we had communication media, we have anatomy and physiology this year. But what's our math class that I forgot that we did last year?
Explorer computer science?
The explorer computer science, but what's the algebra? To, college algebra?
Oh, right, we did the, we switched over into college algebra.
College algebra. So all of those courses are courses that are locally developed courses, it's driven by the faculty. And a lot of times, they're asking students about, "Well, what do you think, what would you like to see?" We'll develop the courses if we have enough students to run the courses, then we run the courses. One of the challenges is, this is a great problem to have. When you have too many courses or you have a lot of courses and you have a finite number of students, and we're averaging out now at about three hundred, which is where our high school's gonna stay, that causes sometimes some inherent, you don't have enough spaces for everything, but also too, you may not have enough students for everything. So moving into the future, one of the things at the high school level that there's been discussion about is rotating courses through, so that throughout your time, you will have a chance to take them. But we may not be able to offer every course every single year, but throughout your high school career, you would have the opportunity to take the courses that you wanted to take. So that you can still get in all your required courses, as well as those electives that you think would be interesting and fun to take. Does that make sense? The two pieces that um we still have work to do. One, as I talked about before, is about the evaluation piece. And the second piece is how we codify it um through curriculum mapping. And that's going to be a process that we've done in fits and starts. But where it seems to make the most sense is when it's embedded within the work that people are already doing, rather than, here's just this add-on thing to do. So as the departments are working on standards, that's the opportunity to think about how do we then get that mapped? How do we then get that organized in a way that it's in a document that's different than just a course syllabus? So that seems to be making more sense. Um, kindergarten, I'll use kindergarten as example. Last year, they decided they really wanted to think about math instruction. So they worked together throughout the course of the year and put all of their best thinking together in a K math curriculum back, which I think they had a lot of, almost all of it done by the end of the year. So that was their initiative, it made some sense to them, it was that job embedded piece. So that seems to be a strategy that works really well for folks. Um, that's really the process that we use. To go along with that, of course, when we have new courses, we ask people to tell us about the resources that they're going to need for the courses, so that as the building principals are developing their budgets, we're making sure we have the appropriate resources within the budget for them. And I'm not sure if there were additional questions that this didn't cover. So this was a more of a general overview, but if there are more specific questions, certainly we can answer them.
I have a long list.
Okay.
So I understand the two processes and thank you for giving us the roadmap. Because now, now there's some framework for us to discuss from, right? Um, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
So a couple of questions, I understand the two paths. One is really um standards-driven, which is coming from department ed, state, whichever.
Yeah.
And then you have local, which seems like it's coming from two places, I think, which is, one is student interest and one is teacher interest. Um, so if we look at the teacher interest side, how do we gather? Um, I'm sorry, if we look at the student interest side, how do we gather data to determine what student interest is?
My experience, particularly at the high school, has been teachers have conversations with their classes. So they're, the teachers themselves. I was just gonna look at Patty, because I know she's not here, have, just be, just talk to the kids. It's, it's, so it's based on the coursework that's already going on and the relationships our teachers have with students. So about the time that we start thinking about rebuilding the course.
Program of studies.
Program of studies, that's the time when teachers will have conversations with students in their classrooms.
Okay? On the teacher interest side, we have limited resources, so how do we prioritize? And what are the enrollment requirements? And um, I know the timeline we covered another time. So I, I understand that piece. But obviously, every teacher that might want to teach something can't become a course in our school district. So how do we prioritize those extra interests that teachers have?
To date, we have been able to accept all of the interests that teachers have brought to us. It is not, is not required us yet to prioritize them.
Okay. And what's the minimum requirement for enrollment? I don't remember.
When we do year one of a class, I go back to my community college days a little bit. And we have taken classes with seven students in it around the start, but then after that, we expect that the number would go up. So we look for a minimum, and this is ballpark, so I don't wanna say that this is a hard and.
No, no, I understand.
But ballpark would be around ten.
Okay. And where does the decision around honors and AP class structure fall into that cap? That picture that you just showed us on the next slide?
On the next slide? It would, well, it would be locally developed, because that's a local choice to have AP or honors courses.
Okay. So we're deciding how we design those?
Yes. So for example, the college, no, that's not a good choice. There's one that has two, that's either AP and college.
Calc has both AP and university and high school.
So what we're trying to do, I just wanna make sure I get it right, because sometimes I don't know this, I don't have to know this schedule like that in depth. So that's why I'm looking at this, please, and just for some assistance. Um, so calc has AP and college and the high school opportunities. So oftentimes, what we're trying to do when teachers are designing the classes is we're having a conversation about, can it be, is it one, is it the other, is it both, what should it look like?
Okay, that's AP. What about the honors pieces? Who's deciding how we're structuring those classes? Whether we're doing it inside other classes, whether we're doing it as standalone courses, et cetera?
That's with Ms. Gleason, with the fact.
Okay.
It's very teacher-driven.
Can I give an example? So for example, we have studio and art, right? Which a lot of our students take, but we have talked in depth about trying to have an elevated level for our students who are pursuing art beyond high school, because we seem to have a number of them. So a lot of schools, if you are going to pursue art, like to see an advanced studio and art course or AP studio and art, in which the students create a portfolio. So when we talk about adding an additional art class potentially, we're looking at having that available for students, because we know we have a number of students who pursue art and how that might impact them in that, in that process to get into college for that specific focus.
I'd rather talk about our STEM courses first.
Well, I'm just giving you an example that's been on the table more recently.
How are we making a decision to have that as a mixed class across multiple classes? Versus having an isolated class for honors program? And when we're making a new course, we have an enrollment minimum that's much lower than the number of people that are starting out in an honors program in a mixed class. So that's a decision that's being made somewhere and I'm not sure how that's fitting in. Because I don't understand the criteria that are being, being used for that.
Well, that's almost, that is, this is just about how the curriculum is developed and how we're developing courses. The conversations around the things and the, the things that we've been doing with honors have been the faculty and staff with the principal here. So they've not been made in any isolation, it's been in conversation with teachers.
Okay, so I think that's.
So but maybe that's a different question to answer.
Well, yeah, I think, I think that's what I was trying to get at. How do we prioritize and decide what we're doing, right? It, it doesn't sound like we necessarily have something that we could refer to and say, "Here's exactly how we're deciding whether we have an extra, uh, uh, an honors math or science or whatever" versus um uh CSI course, I'm just picking these up.
Right, well, the departments are asked every year to have those conversations about what their courses are, how their courses are structured. Am I correct? Last year?
Every year, we, we, we share our program of studies and then we ask for feedback from teachers.
From teachers.
Okay, so teachers.
From previous conversations and.
So teachers are making the decision?
And nobody's making it in isolation. And we're looking at information from our students and conversations with our students and.
So here's my last um piece, and then I have a suggestion. My last piece is my understanding for my board training is all the curriculums and texts need to be approved by the board. And none of these things that have been discussed in this meeting have come to the board for approval since I've been on board.
And the only one we did was the wonders.
We changed the honors program, that didn't come to the board.
Well, we didn't, we not offer a course. The, the, the credit is still offered, we just adjusted the way it was conducted.
We changed the curriculum. Curriculum has to be approved by the board. So do texts, according to New York State law, from what I was taught.
Well, the curriculum is being done just differently.
So it's just that closing.
Without the board having any conversation about it. And then the last thing that I would suggest is that we, if what I was educated for or on from the board training is correct, then I think we need to put together, my suggestion would be, we put together a timeline, so that what's going on in each school with curriculum development, which I get, that's where it should be going. The teamwork, excellent, 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 right? All that stuff is perfect, but I think we're not bringing that around, so it's consistent with, that the board is talking about, okay, here are the things that are being added, this is why there's extra budget here. And we're approving curriculums and the extra costs that it might take to offer these extra courses or to buy the extra software, et cetera, et cetera. I think that closed piece needs to come back. And from my understanding, it's supposed to. So I would like us to figure out how to do that.
Sure. And that certainly is something we checked with our school attorneys on that question and we reported that back a while ago to the board, that boards have various ways that they do that. One is, some boards have a curriculum committee that does that, much like all the other board committees. Some boards do it directly, that's a conversation the board needs to have.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, so you, so that, and then we'll be happy to do it however you want.
But that information still has to come to the board, which means we need a process that that's a step in and right now, that's not a step.
So that would be up for the board to think about, yeah. How that should work.
I think this was a very good discussion, so I appreciate giving us the framework and getting this out there. I think this is what we needed to.
There is a textbook adoption policy. So just so you know, you wanna refer back to that, that might be one that the policy committee wants to look at. In light of, I would offer that one up as a policy to take a look at. If we are going to be building a timeline, then let's make sure that the associated policies with it.
Absolutely.
Are current to what the board wants to do.
Perfect.
There we go. Go, always go back to policy.
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. Our next presentation is Regent's A three and eight test results. All right, Regent's first.
Sure.
I was trying to figure out, I was first. Yeah, didn't it?
Okay, so I had originally emailed one that was from two thousand and seven and I just tried to condense it down, because it's a lot to look at. We know that tests have changed and a lot of different factors have changed. So um, for example, with the Common Core ELA, I, the comprehensive regents has not been given in, in a couple of years. So I took that off altogether and focused on these results. Um, last year, we celebrated our increase to fifty-five percent. This year, um, we did drop a little bit and we have already had conversations about how to work on getting that back up over fifty percent. Some great things. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have two papers that said three to eight ELA, so I'm still trying to figure out which one we're on.
I just passed the one around that says Regent's Results two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
So a couple of great things to celebrate. As Mrs. Grimshaw pointed out, one of the activities we did early last year with our departments was to look at our previous results and try and pinpoint places where our students did not seem to be performing as well. And our global studies teachers talked in depth about that. And one of the areas in which they increased their focus was on the writing skills and how to enhance our students' ability to perform well on that. And so we went up to fifty-five point eight percent mastery, I'm gonna call it fifty-six percent in that point eight of a student. Um, and so that's really great. To go up from thirty-six percent to practically fifty-six percent is a great improvement. And, you know, to have um a, a high percentage of our students earning credit on that exam. And so we were excited about that. U S history has um done well traditionally. And so again, our percentage of students receiving eighty-five or better, which is mastery, is still at sixty percent, which is, which is great. Um, we talked about it a little. We talked about it a little bit last year because somebody said, what is the percentage we're after? And I said a hundred percent. Our goal, of course, would be to have a hundred percent of our students hit mastery on all of their, their regents exams. Another great increase was with earth science, which went up to, again, over fifty percent. Fifty-three percent of our students who took the physical setting earth science exam received an eighty-five percent or better. And our physics exam as well, physical setting physics, we had eighty-five percent. And something we keep talking about is the fewer students we have taking an exam, the more each student impacts that. And we've talked about before, really trying to get more of our students challenging the third science regions, the third math regions, really going after those advanced regents diplomas. And so, those are our overall results. And again, we had some areas where we did not achieve as high in the mastery, but they may have gone up in the overall passing rate. So, different things. And we know that there are a lot of factors. Our math exams in the last couple of years have proven interesting because they keep changing them as they adjust for common core factors, I'll call them. And we talk a lot about the conversion chart, which they use after all the scoring is done. The conversion chart says this many right equals this score. And it seems that that chart often helps some of our friends get over the sixty-five hump, but sort of does a little bit of an injustice for the kids at the top who could probably hit mastery, and the chart is geared to really help kids get to passing, if that makes sense. It doesn't always seem to, to balance out. And as Mrs. Grinchell pointed out, now that our class sizes have equaled out a little bit, it'll be a little easier to judge in terms of from year to year. And if we can get a steady number of kids, as I said, advancing, challenging those higher regents exams, third year science and math.
Is global still, global history still a two-year, and is that changing?
It is. So, it has been covering, you know, a gazillion years. And this is our transition year. So, New York State is giving us a transition exam before we roll to the new global history exam. And there are different reports depending really on what you read, exactly what that's going to look like. We have not seen a ton of documentation about it yet. But Mr. Horner and Mr. Schoff, in an effort to be proactive, worked at the end of last year and into this summer with a curriculum specialist to look at some ideas of how we could prepare our students for the change. And so, they've been doing a lot of work jointly, the ninth and the tenth grade classes together, working together. So, they have been working towards that transition with the information we have so far, and we are eagerly awaiting some sample tests so we can see what it will look like for our students. A lot of what they've talked about is that it will cover fewer years, but the concepts, the themes will be present, but it will cover fewer years on the exam itself.
So, the student will take it at the end?
It'll still be at the end of tenth grade. And so, we would still have those two years. The question is now, they're, they're really looking at more of a thematic focus as opposed to just trying to make sure they get through all of the different time periods? Because now it's fewer time periods, so like I said, the, the themes are the same.
Is sixty-five is passing on the regions, correct?
Correct, and some of our students do earn local credit with a fifty-five. That's why we include that as well.
Okay, how does that work?
Students who have an IEP, and if it's included on their IEP or their five oh four, tell me if I'm wrong.
Yes, all students qualified for fifty-five pass rate and all those other formulas for graduation with fifty-five, students that have identified on their five oh four, the committee has determined, are eligible for, can use fifty-five percent pass rate.
The safety net, they refer to it.
All right, thank you. I'm curious, have we looked at teacher changes that have transpired over this time? What, what am I, what I'm thinking about is, do we have consistent teachers teaching courses so that we can be consistently looking at improvements? Or do we have changes in teachers teaching these courses? I'm not talking about all of them. So that, because that just adds a whole nother variable to this. Can you just give us a little insight? Or do we know, or do we need to look at that?
Well, I mean, obviously, I only have two years of history in terms of people. So, in that regard, we could talk about algebra because Mr. Lilich started last year having replaced, there was a year where there were several people in teaching algebra. So, he's been here for two years. You know, beyond that, everybody that's here for my two years is, is still teaching those courses. Aside from in living environment, we do have someone who's been a part-time teacher for us covering some of our living environment classes for the last two years. And obviously, with Mrs. Saltzman's retirement last June, we now have someone different teaching chemistry. But the other things are static, to my knowledge, at least there is.
The first, the first page you have in your packet is specifically our East Hill School results. So, it's grades three, four, and five combined, aggregate. Three, four, and five are ELA compared to all the other schools in the county, in Montgomery County. The yellow is Montgomery County, the blue is East Hill. This is for the ELA test we took in the spring 2017. And the pair of columns on the far right are proficiency, which is included both level threes and level fours. So, you can see that as a building, East Hill, ELA, we had twenty-three percent of our children who took the test achieve proficiency, levels threes and fours, compared to the county, which was twenty-four percent. And then, as you move from those, that pair down across to the left, you see the level fours, six percent was right there matching. Six percent of our students who took it had a level four. Six percent of the county children who took it had a level four. Level threes, level twos, and level ones. So, this was just for this 2017 administration.
And this is only grade three, four, and five?
Yes, for ELA. The next sheet is the same exact graph, but it's our arithmetic results, which are a bit more encouraging. We had level threes and fours, we had thirty-one percent of children who took it. Again, grades three, four, and five were at proficiency, defined as level three and level four, as opposed to the county, Montgomery County, which was twenty-six percent. This ties to our curriculum proposition we just had in math. We do have a, a little more of an articulation. Most of our grades do use the modules, the New York State modules that came out with the Common Core standards. However, not everybody does that, something in the future. But as, as compared to ELA, we are more in alignment, there's more structure. So, if you were to ask Stacy White, what's the difference between the twenty-three and the thirty-one percent? I would, that is my proposition, is because we do have more structure, more vertical structure, doing the same thing, and more horizontal structure at the grade levels. Opening our lens wider to go from Montgomery County to the state, the graph gets a little more confusing, but the, the first one you see is ELA. And it says on the top, East Hill School grades three to eight. That's a bit confusing because it is just East Hill School grades three, four, and five. Here, you see that same twenty-three percent that were proficient in that 2017 column there, the green circle, as opposed to 2016 when we had thirty-eight percent be proficient. A positive is that we had more students take the test. Under those two circles, you see that we only had a hundred and ten children take the test in 2016. We did, did have a hundred and forty-eight children take it in 2017.
Was there a population change in those grades?
Not necessarily, no.
Do you, do you know whether there was or not?
By population, do you mean?
The total students in three, four, and five between sixteen and seventeen. Compare those, was that flat?
I'm pretty stat between sixteen, sixty-five in my grades.
So, total, total that were eligible to take the test would have been like a hundred and eighty to ninety?
Yes. So, we had fewer opt-outs last year. Again, it's a twenty-three percent. We anticipated this, this showing. When we looked, we use that iReady, the, the online program, and they can do some predictor reports. And that is why we had a bit of a wake-up call in January, December, December 2016, January 2017, when we really wanted to get something in stric, in place, to have a structure, to have articulation, and to really up the rigor, because that's what these, this is telling me. And that is why the, the teacher team really got, came together and determined that wonders purchase, which is now, we are all K-five for the first time in many, many years, all doing the same thing. We have, the district has generously bought days of coaching for professional development, so we implemented correctly. And I have also worked with our coach to identify non-negotiables that are going on in every classroom. And then I'm working with the teachers to make sure that we follow through with those things. And they have the support to do those things successfully.
Can, can you say a little more about the curriculum, the predictor piece? Did that like predict years' future in the school? What, tell me a little bit, what is that predictor function?
So, iReady is the computer instruct, individualized computer instruction that the children, they take a diagnostic test in September, and then it's targeted toward the students' gaps and strengths. And then the teacher goes in and also can assign lessons. And there's a report you can run when we give the mid-year diagnostic that then predicts how they'll do on the state test. And so, when we ran our diagnostic in January of 2017, we realized that we had a bigger gap.
Okay. And that function there where you can tailor lessons for gaps, my words, but I think that's what you're describing. Is that one of the non-negotiables? So that we're using that tool in all classes so that individuals are being cared for then, or no?
It is currently not, it is currently negotiable simply because we don't have enough computers for students to get them on the amount of time they need to be on. But with our brand-new computer cart and with a Chromebook cart coming, we should, this is, we should be much better and more equal this year. I can show, I have data that show that my, and my second grade team and one fourth grade class had the computer carts more than others, and their student scores were higher than the children who didn't have access to the computer cart. So, that's why I'm trying to be more deliberate in the assignment of computer time this year. The next sheet looks very similar to the sheet you just saw, except this is our math results. It's interesting, you can see we lost a few. We gained a few opt-outs, we lost a few children. We tested a hundred and forty-eight children for ELA, we only tested a hundred and forty for math. It's because we gain opt-outs as other children see it or copy from their, from their peers. These results are a, a little stronger. Again, I'd like to see them even stronger than we are. New York State percent was forty percent children were passing at levels three and level fours, and we were only at thirty-one percent. So, certainly something we want to continue to work for. However, that said, I always like to end with a positive. And so, my last sheet in your packet is a dive down to just grade four. If you were to ask me which grade had the most articulated, focused work, worked as a team, looked at their students' skills, really flushed out the thinking of students' math, making a lot of visuals, teaching children multiple strategies on how to solve a problem, it would be grade four. And there you can see, while we tested more children, we also had a slight increase in our proficiency rate. So, we need to learn from them and continue to do the, the good work we need to do.
I have one more. Thank you for all the data. This whole discussion has been really helpful, both whole, I really appreciate that. I think we need to have this candidness in our comments. This is grades three, four, and five. What are we doing to look at grades K-one, two, to make sure that we're not having a feeder pool problem that's giving us grades three, four, and five results?
It's a great question. As we, we had, today was our results first meeting where we look at the data with less than a minute. And that was at the forefront with, how do we look at the most relevant data in order to make sure kids are on grade level? Last year, eighty percent of my kindergartners left kindergarten reading on grade level.
So, that's fantastic.
So, if we can keep that up, we won't have a feeder problem. We still are talking about that at the grade level.
Great.
I have the, the two-sided page that you should have. It says, the print, kind of printed over itself, it says Cannon Jerry Middle School, grades three to eight mathematics on one side, ELA on the backside. I'd like to start on the mathematics side. The one thing I'd like to point out as we look at the numbers is, if you look at the total number of students tested, which is in the, the bottom right, this past year in 2016, we had seventy-seven students test, which is just under forty percent of our student population. So, about two out of every three students refuse the test or opt-out on their parents, with their parents' permission. That being said, we had roughly thirty-two percent of our students this past year at level three and four scores. The New York State average is forty percent, so we are about nine percentage points aggregate between the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, behind the New York State average. Again, we don't have a, a full swath of students in each grade level taking it, and I don't have the individual grade level breakdowns at this point for how many students in sixth, seventh, and eighth respectively took it. So, we are looking at the aggregate data. Excuse me. On the other side, we have the same aggregate data for sixth, seventh, and eighth ELA. What's interesting is we do see a greater number of students taking the ELA exam. So, roughly twenty-one more students, so just about forty-five to forty-six percent of our student body is taking the ELA exam. Overall, with ELA data, forty-five percent of our students are testing out of the level three and four, which is five percentage points higher than the New York State average. In particular, in level three, well, in both, but in level three and four, we are ahead of the New York State average in both score reporting.
So, this one is ELA?
ELA is on one side, math is on the other.
Yeah, the one you were just talking about.
Correct.
ELA, right?
The ELA is where we are ahead of the state.
And this is what grades?
This is sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth. So, we're behind in the feeder to sixth, seventh, and eighth, but we're ahead in.
And I can only speak from the numbers, I don't know Stacy's testing numbers per grade, we're only testing one out of every three students roughly. So, I, I don't know if we're getting accurate numbers as it relates to the general student body.
So, my question on that, has anyone done the statistical calculations to know whether these numbers mean anything? Because you can do the statistics. I've taken a few statistics courses. I'm not an expert in figuring out how to do this, but I know you can do it to determine whether forty-five percent of your population with these results is, will these results have any validity to them or not? Have we done that, Anna? Have we done that analysis? In a related note, do you think we should, and if so, how, encourage people to participate?
So, so.
Our approach, our approach has been to honor families' requests for refusal to take the test. That's been our approach, that this is coming from families, and they are their children. So we have honored those requests. I will say, I think this year at the high school will be an interesting year with our freshmen, because this is the first group that will be entering Regents exams, not having taken any kind of assessment for three years. So we have some students, and I think that bears some watching.
A pretty large population.
A pretty large population. Again, I think that is something that we know. I've already talked with Ms. Gleason about it, and we're talking with the freshman teachers about it, mainly because, while I understand the validity of the test, and let's remember, this test construct changed this year from the year before.
Right.
So you can't even compare, while there is comparison for sixteen, seventeen, you're comparing two different test constructs. So there's a whole lot of other issues around that.
Yeah, I wasn't getting to that level of detail.
Right. But, but, just so you know, there's a lot of issues. On a basic level, one of the things that being in that assessment environment gives kids is practice in those assessments, those types of assessments. So I'm wondering, just a wonder.
Whether it's gonna hurt us.
What that's going to mean for their freshman year, and we're gonna have to watch that.
Yeah. I also wonder, I mean, eventually, test results that are poor affect our district.
Yes, potentially.
We can argue about how, but eventually, there's a negative impact to our district. And I wonder how many parents understand that? Because potentially, it's a negative for their own child's education. And that, to me, is confounding.
For the parents that I've talked to, I think the parents come from a place where they think they're making good decisions on a whole lot of levels, and that certainly is their right and their choice, which is why we try to honor that, right? So I think that's, I'm not sure to answer that question, but I do believe people are coming from a place where it's in what they're thinking is good and the right thing to do.
Because I think the way the state is tying these test scores into everything else over time, I don't know if the general population really understands how that's connected. And maybe, maybe, maybe we can do some education.
Around that.
And that is not to say I'm a proponent of standardized testing.
Right.
But I do understand there's ramifications with it, the way the state is setting it up, and that is the world that we live in.
Next presentation is a leading rating of the next generation learning standards in ELA and math.
So, we're just gonna go down to the timeline slide. So on September eleventh, the Board of Regents passed the New York State Next Generation ELA and Math Standards. So I wanna focus on this for right now, because the information is just coming out, you have it there for you to look at, and we will be back, don't worry, with lots more as we learn. But here is what I think is critical and important about this timeline compared to the implementation of the last standard set, which was the Common Core. So in the Common Core, we had about, oh, a few months to get it all together, and that was about it. So the timeline was very tight. In revising the standards, the timeline gives us time to do the work that we need to do back on the backend, which we already talked about in terms of curriculum and assessment, or curriculum and instruction. So this next year, in the seventeen, eighteen school year, we're gonna be learning a lot. That's our awareness, what's the standards, what are the changes, what are the similarities? And then you can see, there's actually two years of capacity building, where our professional development efforts and work with our teachers will be focused on this. And that's different than when we implemented Common Core. So I think that gives us the opportunity to really wrap our arms around this, to use some of the processes that are already being used to really get it, to implement these standards. And then, in the September of 2020, is when the standards will be implemented, and the first change in the three A assessments will be 2021. So we have a little bit more time to live in that world of crosswalk and transition, which we will do. And this timeline right now is, I think, a really key and important piece of information, because it's how we will frame our work for the next four years. So I just wanted to share that with you and give you the rest of it, and we'll, don't worry, we'll keep you posted as we learn more.
What's meant by professional development? Is that educating educators?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to there?
Yep. There are also, one of the things that we did not do well, and I mean, we in the education field in general, when Common Core came out, it was, in my opinion, very, so rushed, that we did not do a good job of educating families. And that would be a piece that now we would have time to do, because I think that was a missing piece. We weren't able to talk about, we just didn't. We were so busy trying to figure it out and get it implemented, that we did not do what we should have done with families, and I think we'll have an opportunity this time to do that better. Because the timeline's a little elongated.
What's the difference between two-day assessments and full implementation? Is the full implementation gonna be two-day assessments as well, or we don't know yet?
I don't, we don't know yet.
Okay.
The two-day assessments happened last year. So one of the things, one of the changes in the three A assessments last year, right, they went from three days to two days last year. So they, that was a change, so one of the things they're stating is they're keeping the two days.
That they're keeping it.
They're keeping it.
Okay. So it's not, it's not the change, it's just...
The two-day is a change for this year.
For this year.
Essentially, the state said we still have the same testing window, the district, each grade has to pick two consecutive days where they...
To do the assessment, right? But the assessment's not three days anymore.
No, it is now a two-day.
It's two days.
Okay, so that's why they're calling that out on the slide.
Yes, yes.
It's the change for this year.
It's the change.
Okay. And they haven't told us if full implementation is gonna remain a two-day or not?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Although, I suspect it.
It probably would.
What they will say is that the test, the, when full implementation happens, then the standards that will be on three assessments will be the next-gen standards and not Common Core.
Just curious, how, why is the window they give us for doing the testing?
Two-day, oh, oh, it's currently three days.
It's currently three days. Not counting the makeup window. So you deliver it over the course of three days, but it has to be two days in a row. So it's, currently, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so you'd have to do it Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So they give us a three-day window to pick two of them.
Yes, and to pick two.
Okay.
How does the Awareness Building look different from the Capacity Building that looks?
I...
What's the difference?
I would think that this year, I'm going to make a stat, because we haven't seen anything yet, really, other than this. The Awareness Building is just getting the word out that the new standards have been adopted, what are some of the changes in the standards, so it's getting people aware. The Capacity Building is really the dive into the standards, what do the standards look like at each grade level, how do we help teachers make that shift or make those adjustments in curriculum and instruction.
So hopefully, this school year will have all of the information to start looking at it.
Yes. Our BoSSes will most likely, the state and our BoSSes will most likely be helping with providing those awareness sessions.
Well, the former slides are the highlights.
Yes.
But they haven't given us the detail.
Correct.
And what is our, since it seems like it's, it seems like they've created the standards in a similar model of it's ELA, it's math, right? Have, are we taking this time to figure out how, once we finally get the finals, we'll assess how we map up, or?
Right, because there'll be that, it's called a crosswalk or a transition time, so you take the current stand, this will be, for me, in my career, I think the fourth or maybe fourth standard shift we've done, maybe fifth. But you take the current standards, you take the new standards, and you look at them side by side, so you develop that crosswalk to see specifically where things are the same, where things are different, and then you look at it in relation to your instruction.
And can we have a plan on how we're gonna do that as well?
Not yet.
Because that would be what we could do in this interim year.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so is that our plan to develop, our plan?
Yeah, our plan is to have a plan to, how are we going to do this?
To do the assessment.
To do the assessment piece, how do we get all this rolling? We just need a little more information.
Yeah, okay.
That's a pretty common standard way to look at it.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We didn't have as much time to do that with the Common Core, interestingly enough, although we gave it a shot, teachers did take a look at it, but not within the span of a few years like we're gonna do here. So we can come back, this will be, you will see this as a recurring, as we make those plans, get that piece developed, we'll come back and give you updates.
They giving us, given us a timeline on when we'll get the next level of detail, or no? I figured I knew the answer, but I wanted to ask anyway.
I anticipated soon.
Okay, cool, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approvals. And we have a motion to adopt the SEQRA resolution. Well, that's a seeker, seeker resolution. Motion to. In a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Okay, any discussion?
So as Mr. Tomasky offered us at the last time when he was making a presentation, the part of the work of considering a capital project is to do the environmental review, so that has been completed. I just wanna make sure. And so we just need, the board would just need to consider adopting it. Oh, and then that makes us the lead agency, I'm sorry, I knew there was something in So just to remind everybody, as part of the secret process, every agency or other entity may be asked if they want to be the lead agency, all other potential lead agencies have declined the opportunity.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
So discussions? Yeah, building from ground.
Yeah, that's why we're asking. Basically, this is, all it's saying is that this gives us the ability to...
Correct.
Right. And we're stating that we don't see any negative ramifications of doing so.
Correct.
Right. That's what I wanted to say, is what exactly are we resolving?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, environmentally.
Yeah, there's no negative environmental impact.
Okay, are we ready to make a vote?
Yeah, at this point, I'll, I'll make your motion.
We have the motion, it's a question, so, there you go. If there is no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Again, Epstein. Okay, and at this time, we would recess into executive session, and we just need a motion, we're adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing complications that involve a particular person and/or deliberation, and if any other matter may come to light in the court.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.